Will now come to order, may we all have our heads for a moment of silent prayer.
Amen.
Okay, Chief Clerk, roll call.
Senator Aritas.
Okay. Let's go.
Senator Christian. Senator Aritas.
Okay. Let's go.
Senator Christian. Floor Leader Harper.
Aye, mine.
Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Net. Senator Palig.
Yes.
Senator Berman. Senator Romelow. Senator Urusamal.
He's here.
Senator Wally.
Yes.
Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, eleven members are present.
Uh, we do have a forum to transact business today. Okay, reading of the journal for Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move for, uh, I move to dispense with the reading of the journal.
So good, good. It has been moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, uh, we now dispense with the reading of the journal. Uh, your cameras are off, uh, Floor Leader and Chairman Figuerre. Can you turn on your, uh, so we see what you guys are doing? Okay. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Next item is item five, presidential communications. We are in receipt of numbers, uh, two one one dash four five four to number two one one dash four sixty-two.
Okay, uh, I signed those communications. I mean, uh, Chief Clerk, next item.
Item six of some Supreme Court communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item seven, member communications, none also, Mr. Speaker. Item eight, departmental communications, none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none also, Mr. Speaker. Item ten, state communications, none. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, none also, Mr. Speaker. And item thirteen, foreign government communications, none also, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're on our order of the day. Item fourteen, standing committee reports, do we have any, Chief Clerk?
Uh, as of now, we do not have standing committee reports, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, next item.
Item fifteen, special committee reports, none also, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item sixteen, for assignment of measures and communications, kindly refer to referral sheet number two one one dash one two zero.
Okay, Chairman and members, uh, if you would ask for your planning purposes, next item.
Unfinished business, none, Mr. Speaker.
Item eighteen, bill calendar first read.
The verse bill is CB number two one one dash two six three for verse reading. CB number two one one dash two six three is a bill for an act to further amend public, to amend section six oh nine A of title fifty-five of the Code of the Federated States of Magnesia annotated as amended by public law numbers two one one dash one oh four and two one one dash one two zero in order to allow for other businesses not previously covered by public law number two one one dash one two zero impacted by the COVID nineteen pandemic to also receive tourism mitigation financial assistance from the national government and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuere.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, and move for the passes of the bill on first reading.
And second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that Congress passed on first reading, CB number two one one dash two sixty-three. Okay, discussion. Any discussions?
Speaker. Speaker.
Chairman, uh, who said? Can you?
Yes, I give it, Speaker.
Oh, Senator Palig, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a real quick, uh, brief one, uh. The current law allows for additional relief. Uh, may I ask if, um, that has been implemented? I recall discussion on possibly allowing utilities and rent. Has that actually been, uh, included as part of the current program?
Okay, Chairman Figuere.
And Senator, I didn't get your question.
Can you please repeat your question, uh, Senator Palig?
The, uh, current law allows for additional relief. And I recall in one of the public hearings, we were specifically, uh, considering, uh, rent and, uh, utility. My question is whether or not, uh, that has been included and implemented under the current program.
I.
Okay, Chairman Figuere.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Speaker, and thank you, Senator Palig. I'm not sure, and I think that's the purpose of the expanding the, the mitigation, uh, relief, uh, assistance. I think right now it's only limited to the, uh, uh, tourism, hospitality type of business.
Good. Uh, are you finished, uh, Chairman Palig? You're still on the floor, still at the floor.
Yeah, thank you, uh, no, I, I'm specifically, uh, looking at, um, page two, line twelve. And, uh, additional relief may be added per regulations. So I was under the impression that the regulation would allow that committee to include other, uh, uh, relief. Example would be rent or utilities, uh, and others. Um, this, uh, proposed amendment is to basically expand the program to include other businesses. But the, the reason I asked that question, Mr. Speaker, ties into the follow-up question on the resources we have, whether we have the money. We expand this program, uh, to include other, uh, businesses, not specific purpose, but businesses, then do we have the funding?
Okay, Chairman Figuere, you care to enlighten, uh, us on?
Yeah, I think the first part of the question is, uh, uh, if, uh, the, those businesses that you mentioned, senators, uh, can be done by, through, by regulation, they would have not asked for an amendment or expansion of the, uh, medication program. But I, I think they see it necessary to amend the law so to include those. The, uh, the funding, I think, uh, there's, uh, there is enough until, uh, I, I would say May, uh, twenty twenty-one. Uh, during that time, uh, we may have to either put more capital into the program or just, uh, see it, uh, reach its natural death.
Okay, thank you, Speaker. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Senator Palig, okay, uh, Chairman Orsomal.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for having us. I want to ask for a short res- nay.
Short res, subject to go on the chair. Time they're paying their, uh. Yeah, so let's go back and, uh, continue discussing this, okay? Congress is back in session, uh. Any further discussion on the bill? If none.
Question.
There's objection. Discussion is closed, we will fold by rule call of members, this is first reading. Chief Clerk.
Chairman Aritas, Senator Aritas.
Yes. Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Figuere.
Yes.
Senator Colin. Floor Leader Harper.
Aye.
Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Net. Senator Palig.
Yes.
Senator Berman.
Aye, mine.
Senator Romelow. Senator Urusamal. Senator Wally.
Yes. Yes.
Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, eleven members voted for.
CB number twenty-one dash two six three has passed Congress on first reading, uh, next bill.
The next bill under the bill calendar is CB number two one one dash three one four CD one for second and final reading. CB number two one one dash three one four CD one is a bill for an act to amend public law number two one one dash one five seven as amended by public law number two one one dash one seventy-nine by amending section four and six thereof for the purpose of changing the use and allotment of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompei State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuere.
Move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
Agreed.
It has been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CB number twenty-one dash three one four CD one. Discussion. Any discussion on the bill? If none.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Chairman Orsomal.
Mr. I am speaker, I believe I have, uh, uh, an amendment that I wish to make on the bill.
Okay, proceed.
So already been, uh, printed, duplicated, and, uh, distributed to members. So, uh, uh, I, uh, asked that the, uh, reading of the amendment be suspended.
Okay.
And, uh, I want, I have an oral, uh, correction on the, I mean, amendment on the amendment.
Okay, let's, let's, all right, uh, any second to the motion?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the offered, uh, for amendment by, uh, Chairman Orsomal to CB twenty-one dash three one four be adopted because of its length, we will dispense with its reading, uh, Floor Leader Harper, any motion to suspend?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, move to suspend the rule that prohibit substantive amendment on second reading.
Chairman.
It has been moved and seconded that the relevant rules, specifically the rules, uh, prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final reading be suspended. Those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried, so the relevant rules are suspended. Uh, discussion on the offered, uh, for amendment by Chairman Orsomal. Chairman Orsomal, make your correction.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Uh, in the amendment where it says GPA, grade point average of two point, uh, to add the word at a phrase, or better. So move.
Okay, any second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendment by, uh, Chairman Orsomal to the, uh, uh, proposed for amendment be adopted, uh, discussion on the offered oral amendment. Any discussions?
Question.
You ask for, call for it, there's no objection. Discussion is closed on the offered oral amendment, so let's vote, those in favor of the offered oral amendment, uh, proposed by Chairman Orsomal, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, the offered oral amendment to the, uh, proposed for amendment, uh, are adopted, okay, any, uh, further discussion on the offered for amendment? Any further discussion, if none, there's no objection, uh, discussion is closed, so let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offered for amendment as orally amended, uh, to CP three one four, uh, say aye.
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 Motion carried, the offer for amendment, uh, by Chairman Orsomal to CP twenty-one dash three one four CD one, uh, are adopted, we now have CD two. Any further discussion on CD two? If none, if there is no objection, discussion is closed, so we will fold by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
For the state of Juk, Chairman Aritas.
Yes.
State of Pompei, Chairman Berman. State of Kosai, Chairman Wally.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Urusamal.
Aye, mine.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for.
Uh, CP number twenty-one dash twenty-one four CD two has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
The next bill under the bill calendar is CB number two one one dash three twenty CD one for second and final reading. CB number two one one dash three twenty CD one is a bill for an act to further amend public law number twenty dash one two five as amended by public law, laws numbers twenty dash one three five, twenty dash one forty-six, twenty dash one five seven, twenty dash one seven nine, twenty dash one eight nine, two one one dash oh six, two one one dash forty, two one one dash fifty-nine, two one one dash eighty-nine, two one one dash ninety-six, two one one dash one four one, and two one one dash one five five by amending sections three and four thereof to change the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of the states of Kosai and Pompei and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figuere.
Move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
Agreed.
It has been moved and seconded that, uh, Congress passed on second and final reading, CP number twenty-one dash three two zero CD one. Okay, discussion, any discussion on that? Chairman Berman.
Uh, Speaker.
Yes. Proceed.
Uh, thank you, Spee- yeah, thank you, Speaker, I have, uh, floor amendment to offer to the said bill. It's, it's a short, uh, floor amendment, and may I ask the Chief Clerk to, um, read it?
Okay, proceed, Chief Clerk, a short one.
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, we have a floor amendment to CB number twenty-one dash three twenty CD one offered by Senator Fernies Berman. Item one of his floor amendment is, uh, page four, line nineteen, delete fifty thousand, and insert the figure twenty thousand in lieu thereof. Item two, page five, between lines two one one and twenty-two, insert the following, uh, subsection W, Pompei State Detective Office renovation, thirty thousand.
So move, Mr. Speaker.
Any second?
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded that the offer amendment to CP twenty-one dash three two zero And seconded that the offer amendment to CP twenty-one dash three-two-zero, CD one offered by Chairman Berman be adopted. Okay, uh, discussion. Any discussion? If none, there's no objection.
Question.
Is closed. So let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offer for amendment to CP twenty-one dash three-two-zero, CD one offered by Chairman Berman, say aye. Opposed, no.
Aye.
Carried. The offer for amendments are adopted. We now have CT two. Any further discussion on CT two? Discussion. Questions been called for. If there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's fold by rule call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
State of Juk, Chairman Aritos.
Yes.
State of Pompeii, Chairman Berman.
Aye.
State of Kosai, Chairman Wally.
Yes. Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Urusimal.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for.
Uh, CP number twenty-one dash three-two-zero, CD one, CD two has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
The next bill is CB number twenty-one dash three-four-one, CD one for second and final reading. CB number twenty-one dash three-four-one, CD one is a bill for an act to amend sections one, three, eight, and nine of Public Law Number twenty-one dash one-eight-five to appropriate seven-hundred-sixty-five thousand dollars of additional funds from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one to provide funding for the Federated States of Micronesia's, uh, membership fees and activities in Interpol and to fund the CUM FSM Endowment Fund and for other purposes.
Uh, Chairman Figuerre.
Move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
Agreed.
Has been moved and seconded that the Congress pass on second and final reading. CP number
Sure, this is.
That's three-fourty-one, CD one. Discussion.
Sure. Sure, this is please.
Sure, this subject to God be there.
Chairman Figuerre.
Let's go. Congress is back in session, we're discussing CB number 21 dash 341. Any further discussion?
Speaker, I was going for...
Ursimal? You raised your hand. We cannot hear you, so you're out of order, we cannot hear you.
Move for the previous question.
Speaker.
Second.
Second.
Amendment.
And I cannot hear you, you have to speak up. What's wrong with your audio?
Speaker, I have an amendment that I wish to make on the bill.
Okay, there is an... Where is it? Short recess.
Now you're too loud. Speaker.
Go back. Speaker. Congress is back in session, we're still discussing the amendment, I mean, Chairman Ursimal, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I have a a floor amendment that I wish to make on the bill. It's printed and duplicated and distributed. It's a very short one, may I ask that the Chief Clerk read the short amendment?
Okay, Chief Clerk.
We have a floor amendment to CB number 11 dash 341 CD1 offered by Senator Joseph J. Ursimal, it reads as follows: Item 1, page 1 in the title, second sentence, delete the figure[370.86][371.10]$665,000 and insert the figure $765,000 in Lutherov. Item 2, page 1, line 4, delete the figure and insert the figure $64,525,467 in Lutherov. Item 3, page 4, line 23, delete the figure and insert the figure $16,78,515 in Lutherov. And item 4, page 13, line 18, delete the figure $100,000 and insert the figure $200,000 in Lutherov.
Okay, Chairman Ursimal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I so move for the adoption of the said floor amendment.
Second.
It moved and seconded that the offer for amendment to CB 21 dash 341 CD1 offered by Chairman Ursimal be adopted. The relevant rules are suspended up to this point. Okay, discussion. Any discussion? Chair Herbert. Discussion.
Thank you, Speaker. If I may not be out of order, I move to defer the amendment to January session.
Second.
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 It has been moved and seconded that the offer for amendment be deferred to...
Short recesses, please.
Short recesses.
That was a good...
Let's go back. Congress is back in session, floor leader, withdraw your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my motion unwillingly.
Okay, there's no objection, the motion is withdrawn. Okay, we continue discussing the floor amendment offered by Chairman...
Question.
Ursimal. Questions?
Speaker. Speaker.
There is no objection, discussion is closed on the offered... Yes. Vice Chairman Palik.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, you know, if hundred thousand is what we're talking about, we have that money. I am ready to support that for two reasons. One, if PMA helps the people of Yap, it's helping this country. And if we provide assistance that might relieve CIA to provide assistance to Kosai State. So, you know, I think it's a very valid request, I want to be consistent, I told Chairman Ursimal, in situation where I think it's justified and very good reason, and this is one of them. I would support if we have the money, support the effort to provide assistance to PMA because it provides services to our people. And eventually, if it relieves the services of CIA that could benefit my small state of Kosai. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
In January. It's not a matter of the...
Use your public project.
Of the timing.
In January, yeah. In January.
There's no...
We have privilege, Mr. Speaker.
Short recess of the chair. Okay, let's go back. Congress is back in session, Congress is back in session. There is no further discussion and if there is no objection, the discussion is closed on the offered amendment by Chairman Ursimal, so let's vote. Those in favor of adoption of the offered amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
No.
Nay.
No.
The motion does not... The offer for amendment is not adopted. Okay, so let's continue discussion on CD1. Any further discussion on CD1? Questions? For? There is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's vote by recall of delegations, Chief Clerk.
For the State of Chuk, Chairman Aridos. Chairman Aridos.
Chief Clerk.
State of Ponpe, Chairman Perman.
Yes.
State of Kosai, Chairman Wali.
Yes. Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Ursimal.
Danmakin.
Danmakin Stan.
Okay. Chief Clerk. What's the result?
Yes, Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, three states voted for, one against.
Okay.
I will remember that.
Speaker.
Yes. Chairman Ursimal, before I announce the result.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, if I may. Yes, you're chairman of the committee on E. Unfortunately, there is a section in here that includes CYM FSM Entitlement Fund. I therefore wish, and I know Yap State supports that idea of entitlement fund, not only for CYM FSM, but also for the FSM Trust Fund. I therefore change the app vote from no to yes on the basis of entitlement fund, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Avi.
Ursimal, for your kind heart, okay, and re-announce the result, Chief Clerk.
Sorry, Mr. Speaker, the new results are four states voted for.
Okay, CB number 21 dash 341 CD1 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
The next bill under the bill calendar is CB number 11 dash 342 for second and final reading. CB number 21 dash 342 is a bill for an act to amend public law number 21 dash 201 by amending sections 4, 5, and 6 thereof for the purpose of changing the use and allotment of funds previously appropriated to fund priority infrastructure projects and other public projects and social programs for the people of Ponpe and Chuk states and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Speaker.
Move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 21 dash 342. Discussion. A discussion, Chairman Perman.
Thank you, Speaker, can you do short recess, I'm looking for my...
Short recess subject to call, here. Okay. Congress is back in session, okay, we're still discussing CB 21 dash 342. Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker. Thank you for allowing me the short recess to find it, but, Mr. Speaker, I do have a floor amendment to the said bill, 21 dash 342. I believe that copy has been made and distributed to all members because of its lengthy, as we, may I ask, the reading be dispensed with, I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the offer for amendment to CB 21 dash 342 offered by Chairman Perman be adopted, and because of its length, we will dispense with its reading, and the relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Okay, discussion on the offered floor amendment, any discussion?
Short recess, please.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. And that will take care of the bill itself. Okay, let's go back. Congress is back in session, Chairman Perman.
Okay, so, Mr. Speaker, I so move with the reaction on the said bill to tomorrow's session.
Amendment.
The amendment.
Okay.
Chairman.
I said that the offered amendment is deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. The amendments are deferred tomorrow, also along with that, also the bill. Okay, so next bill, Chief Clerk.
Speaker, short recess.
Speaker.
Speaker. Chair Herbert.
Let's go back. Congress is back in session. Chairman Perman?
Okay, so, Mr. Speaker, I shall move with the reaction on the said bill to tomorrow's session.
Amendment.
The amendment.
Okay. They offered amendment is deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carried. The amendments are deferred to tomorrow, also along with that, also the pill. Okay, so next bill, Chief Kirk.
Speaker, sir, recess.
Speaker, speaker.
You have the chair. Let's go back. Congress is back in session. Chief Kirk, if we link those. First bill.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The first bill is under the bill calendar is CB number 21-307 for first reading. CB number 21-307 is a bill for not to further amend Public Law Number 19-85 as amended by Public Law's numbers 19-155, 20-180 and 21-50 by amending section four thereof to broaden the mandate of the Joint Committee on Combat Review and Planning or JCRP in order to achieve the overall call of the amended combat and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Thank you, Speaker. I move that Congress passes on first reading Congress Bill 21-307.
Second.
Moved and seconded at Congress by CB number 21-307. Okay, on first reading, discussion. Any discussion?
Mr. Speaker.
Yes? Christian, you have the call.
I moved that with the reaction to the January session.
Short recess. Okay, let's go back. Thank you. Congress is back in session. Any further discussion on the bill? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote by a vote of members for first reading. Chief Kirk.
Senator Arrethos.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Figueroa.
Yes.
Senator Collin. Lord Leader Harper.
You.
Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Neath. Senator Palick.
Yes.
Senator Perman. Senator Perman. Senator Ramallo. Senator Rosamal. Senator Wally. Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, nine members voted for, one against.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Short recess. Subject to call the chair. Back, let's go back. Congress is back in session. Chief Kirk, announce the result again. The votes.
Mr. Speaker, nine members voted for and one against.
For that reason, CB number 21-307 does not pass Congress.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
Congress is subject to call the chair. Let's go back. Congress is back in session. We're still on the Bill calendar. Next bill, Chief Kirk.
Speaker, speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may I, what has happened to my vote?
It's confirmed, yes.
Remain on that.
I already make the ruling. So if you want to raise a point of privilege or point of information, you can do so.
Point of privilege.
Or tomorrow we can re-.
Point of privilege.
Say your points, Senator Christian.
I misspoke earlier during our vote and I had meant to say yes when I said no. And thank you for correcting that, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Senator Christian, for, you know, noticing that you misspoke. Okay, Chief Kirk, change the vote for Senator Christian.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker. I think the ruling has already been made and I think the proper motion is to reconsider our vote.
Okay, there is a point of order, okay.
Speaker, Pete Christian was going to change his vote before the ruling came out.
Ruling was already made.
The ruling was already made, that's true, so we will keep it as it is unless there is a motion to reconsider. Chairman Figueroa.
Okay, Speaker, I move that we reconsider the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we reconsider our action on 21-307. That will take the same number of votes, ten votes at least. So let's vote by roll call of members. Chief Kirk.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, for reconsideration of CB number 21-307 on first reading. Senator Arrietaz.
Rest of your ears.
Senator Christian. Senator Figuer.
Yes.
Senator Collin. Floor Leader Harper.
Aye.
Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Neath. Senator Palick.
Yes.
Senator Berman. Senator Ramallo. Senator Rosamal.
Wait, pain, yes.
Senator Wally.
What is the pain?
Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, ten members voted for.
Okay, for that reason, the motion to reconsider our action has been adopted by Congress, so re-read the title of the bill.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we still have CB number 21-307 for first reading. CB number 21-307 is a bill for an act to further amend public law number 19-85 as amended by public laws numbers 19-155, 20-180, and 21-50 by amending section four thereof to broaden the mandate of the Joint Committee on Comeback Review and Planning or JCRP in order to achieve the overall call of the amended comeback and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Okay. Move for the passes of the bill.
Again.
Again.
Moved and seconded at Congress pass on first reading CB number 21-307. Discussion. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of members on first reading. Chief Kirk.
Senator Arrietaz.
Yes.
Senator Christian.
No, I'm just kidding, yes.
Senator Figuer.
Yes.
Senator Collin. Floor Leader Harper.
Aye.
Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Neath. Senator Palick.
Yes.
Senator Berman. Senator Ramallo. Senator Rosamal. Senator Rosamal. Senator Wally. Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, ten members voted for.
For that reason, CP number 21-307 has passed Congress on first reading. Thank you very much to all of you members, especially Senator Christian, thank you. Okay, next bill.
The next bill under the Bill calendar is CB number 21-345 for first reading. CB number 21-345 is a bill for an act to further amend public law number 20-178 as amended by public laws numbers 21-01, 21-07, 21-36, 21-53, 21-56, 21-102, 21-115, 21-137, 21-165, 21-178, and 21-200 by amending sections four and six thereof to change the use and allottee of funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Pompe state and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
Move for the passes of the bill on first reading.
And seconded.
Again.
Moved and seconded at Congress pass on first reading CP number 21-345. Okay, discussion. Short recess subject to call the chair.
Mr. Speaker.
Impossible for me that one man iden lapse while others are still in effect. Okay, so let's go back. Congress is back in session. We're discussing CP 21-345. Any further discussion on that bill? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. We will vote by roll call of members. Chief Kirk.
Senator Arrietaz.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Figuer.
Yes.
Senator Collin. Floor Leader Harper. Floor Leader Harper.
Short recesses.
Short recess. Subject to call the chair. All right. Congress is back in session. Continue the roll call. Chief Kirk.
Floor Leader Harper.
Okay, can I turn down the bill for Tawok? Yes.
Senator Conman. Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Neath. Senator Palick.
Yes.
Senator Berman.
Aye, mine.
Senator Ramallo. Senator Rosamal. Senator Wally. Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, ten members voted for.
CB number 21-345 has passed Congress on first reading. Next bill.
There are currently no more bills, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, short recess.
Short recess, Mr. Speaker.
Amendment tomorrow.
We can't do it. Alright, so let's go back and wrap up for today. Congress is back in session, okay. There is no further appeal. If there is no objection, we go down to item nine. Yes, Chairman Berman.
Again. Okay, Speaker, I was gonna move, motion to stand in recess till 10:00 AM tomorrow.
Again.
It has been moved and seconded at Congress, standing recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning, true time. Those in favor say aye. Although, Nick. Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning, true time. So.